Okay, the meeting of November 20th, regular school board meeting will come to order. Tom Newkirk is out of town, so I am, as vice chair, filling in for tonight. And the first thing that we have on our agenda is a middle school update. So invite folks to come to the podium.
Thank you. So I'm Ron Lamar with LaValle Brezinger Architects. And we're just going to run through an update of the project. I'm just going to quickly go through what lots of you have seen already. And then Andre will go over the budget and the schedule. So the four pillars of this project is sustainability, academic, safety, and wellness. The biggest thing is to provide a 21st century school environment and make sure that the academics are ready for the future, or future-proofed, if you will. Wellness was a big topic of discussion in community meetings and with educators, which made it one of the pillars. Same thing with sustainability. So there's been lots of discussion about not only having a building or a school that is sustainable over the next several decades, but reduces operational costs, carbon footprint, our energy use. And there's been a lot of talk in the community, as we've met over the past year, about LEED So as you've seen before, this is the site plan. The site itself breaks the traffic up into two areas, parent drop-off, which you see here, and then bus drop-off here, provides for a field and also provides for parking, more parking than you have now. And then the back of the building will be playfields, gardens, educational space. What we're trying to do is make best use of the site. The safety aspects of it, we're building a vertical building, so one of the benefits to that are all of the core learning spaces are on the second, third, and fourth level, and all of the public spaces are on the main level. So students, aside from lunch and music and phys ed, library, will be in their core classrooms on the upper levels throughout the day, safer place. The plans themselves were a work in -- that was, essentially comes out of the community meetings and the educator meetings and the meetings we had with the students. All of the red that you see up front is administration and counseling spaces. All of that has eyes on the front door, and all of that has eyes on the site. So it was very important that all of the adults are basically at the front door and seeing the entire site. We then have the blue here, which is athletics, which is the gym, and PE. We have a recital hall for the music program, common area in between. The chorus and the band flank the spaces of the recital hall. And then the library is right on access with the main door. And food service serves students in the dining hall, which acts as a learning commons, except for two lunch periods during the day. On the second floor, we have world languages and health and music, the chorus room, actually, with the balcony to the recital hall. We also have art and STEM on that second level. When we go to the third and fourth floor, they're identical, and the four colors represent fourteen pods, if you will. Each team has its own stair. That allows the students from each team to go up and down and get to their specials without interrupting the other teams throughout the day. And the core in the center is, again, special places for the students, their small meeting rooms, special education resource rooms, faculty space. The fourth floor is identical. You'll also notice that the shape of the building is a square, because, again, with sustainability involved, what we're trying to do is create the most sustainable shape, if you will, minimize the exterior wall envelope. We still are looking at sketches throughout the building of what the interior feel of the building will be. So these are some interior shots, this being the main lobby, this being that common area out in the middle between recital and phys ed gym. We have the recital hall itself, and we have the gymnasium. The exterior of the building, again, it's all designed around a couple of things. One is sustainability. So the windows and the treatments of the windows are doing two things. Twenty-five percent of the exterior wall envelope is window, and that is to maximize seventy-five percent of well-insulated exterior wall. The windows are also positioned within the learning spaces to harvest as much daylight as we can. We do have a bay over the front door to sort of welcome people into the school, to let people know where that front door is. And you can see here from this image that we have administration and counseling on both sides of that front door. So that started to really shape how the building looked, how the building worked. And the blue that you see in the Oyster River, obviously it has a lot to do with the tradition of the school, and it has to do with making it more playful for the middle school students from Code Drive. Again, it's a function of this wall here being the wall of the recital hall, sort of picking up on some musical notes, and then, again, strategically placing windows so that we are maximizing daylight and also maximizing energy efficiency. So if there's no questions on that, I'll let Terrence over.
Ron, can you just go back to your new slide related to sustainability and walk through that a little bit more slowly?
Sure.
Because it's the first time the community will have been exposed to it.
Okay. So one of the things that we've done in terms of the building systems themselves is to enhance the exterior envelope. So within this project, what we're looking at is insulation values on the outside of this building that exceed code, and what they're providing is to drive down the energy use in the building. So we have aspects such as triple-pane windows and R60 roof instead of an R25 or an R30. We have R34 walls instead of R20. We have R20 under the slab instead of R10. And so what that enables us to do is energy modeling to predict the performance of the energy in the building. We have other energy-efficient systems. Those include geothermal and a natural gas hybrid, natural gas for the solar hot water, and also natural gas to pick up the coldest days of the years, if you will. The benefit of the geothermal is you get air conditioning throughout the building just by running some pumps, so we don't need electric cooling. And then there's the energy efficiency when it comes to lighting. We've got solar hot water, we've got daylighting throughout the building, and all of the fixtures inside and out will be LED. So the results of that is our -- the building that we've designed, based, again, on a lot of feedback from the educators about movement throughout the building, is we're 23% more spatially efficient than the existing school. So what that means is we have less corridor, less stair, even though we have the four stairs. We have less ramps, stairs, corridors throughout the building, 23% less than the existing building has now. We also have 34% more space. So we have to remember that we came up with the square footage of the building primarily based upon the fact that many of your classrooms did not meet state standards. So that's where we started. We started with enlarging the educational spaces to meet state standards. We then took a look at the music programs and the recital hall, the feedback we got from the community about the gym, if you will, the basketball court size. And with all of that, because we are focusing on this sustainability piece, even without the solar panels, so we've talked about photovoltaics on a roof as part of a purchase agreement, even without them, we're 66% better energy -- or more energy efficient than the existing school, which means you'll be paying 27% less cost per square foot throughout the building. Now, the last thing you'll see on the left-hand side of the slide is LEED certification. There's been a lot of talk throughout the community, as we've done, as we've gone through this over the past year, about really having something that certifies the building as green. You know, it's one thing for an architect or a contractor, an engineer, to stand here and say, yes, it's a green building, and it's another thing to have a third-party certify that building as a sustainable building. So what we tried to do is give everyone that amount of information on this, on this slide.
What's changed since the last time you were here?
What's changed?
What's changed? Yeah, what has changed since the last time you presented to the school board?
Good question. Not a lot. I mean, what we've been doing is going through and finalizing some of the interiors, if you will, some of the exteriors when it comes to the site. We've had a couple of site meetings which have sort of moved the building 15 feet to the left, if you will, or to the right, as we start to go through the final logistics plans of how it's going to work. We've also taken a look at how the traffic works much better, because that's also been a big topic of discussion here at the board meetings. But the building itself, it hasn't gotten any bigger or smaller, and we haven't added or taken away any windows or anything like that. Yep?
And so you've mentioned to us all and throughout the process, the kind of the environmental advantages of this school and kind of the, in quote, greenness of it. And the solar panels, though, are not in the current, what we will soon hear, the total number.
Correct.
Could you remind me what the cost of those solar panels are?
Sure. So what this district's been looking at is a power purchase agreement with Revision Energy. And so we haven't heard back from Revision Energy, except for they're looking at about 250 kilowatt system. And so, without getting into the numbers, I just happen to know, based on a very recent project that just bid, that that can run somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. Revision Energy is still working on that, though, and it's sort of a, you know, moving target right now. What they're looking at is the amount of square footage we have on the roof to determine how many solar panels they can fit on the roof, and then how many might be over a parking lot. So that's the big question in all of this. But if you get a 300-kilowatt system, you're looking at, you know, upwards of over a half a million dollars.
Thank you.
And it would work the same way the town did with the solar array out in Lee, Ken, where the savings from the usage offsets the cost of the solar panels.
And maybe we'll have the discussion. The only reason I ask, I think it's just a consideration, do we try to roll it into the bond and have a done deal, or is it something that we hold out for the future?
So why don't we have discussions specifically with Revision? Part of the way that Revision works is they get outside investors who get tax advantages, which is why municipalities and school systems use them. And that, and the offset is the greater efficiency pays for the solar panels. So why don't we have them come in with Ron and do a presentation specifically around that issue, and then, I know Michael has been interested in that in the past as well, have that be the focus of one of the presentations.
Great. Thank you.
For the figures on this slide?
Yep.
The 34% more square feet, is that gross square feet? You're looking at total?
It is.
Building size? And then how does the -- what does 66% more energy efficient mean?
So what that means, I don't know what. So what that, the 66% more energy efficient, right now, you use a certain amount of kilowatt-hours, which we've documented, Susan has provided us with exactly what you spent in 2018, as well as natural gas, thermes, if you will, or cubic feet of gas, that's how it's measured. And so we're able to look at exactly how much energy that used per square foot for the entire year. So with the energy modeling that our energy engineer's been doing, they're able to take our building and predict with the insulation, with the systems that we're using. For instance, LED lighting takes a lot less energy to use than the T8s and the T5s that you have in your existing school. And so they're able to predict that we're going to use so many kilowatt-hours and so many thermes for your natural gas throughout an entire year in this building. And so what that gives you, it's called an energy use intensity, an EUI, and you translate the BTUs into BTUs per square foot per year, and you translate the kilowatt-hours into BTUs, and that gives you so many BTUs per square foot per year. So your building right now is operating at a 50, roughly, I think it's 50 or 50.2 EUI. So that's 50 BTUs per square foot per year, and we're predicting just over 17 for the new building.
Wow.
And so, and that's a whole measure of things. It's the way that the building is shaped, it's the way that the building's oriented on-site, it's the amount of daylighting that we're harvesting, but it's also the amount of insulation we have on the building. So that's why way back when, when we were talking about these strategies that New Building Institute has and other green organizations, where we said we want to keep the window-to-wall ratio to 25%, that's really where this happens, you know?
So in that calculation, kilowatt-hour of electricity and a kilowatt-hour of natural gas are treated the same way?
Right, so they are. So the conversion of kilowatts to BTUs, I think, is 3.14.
Okay.
And so, or 3.41.
Do you have a sense of how the mix of electricity versus gas will change from current to?
Yes, you're going to be using a lot more electricity and a lot less gas. So the other thing that you're doing, just by default, in having these types of systems, is you're using a lot less carbon. So your carbon footprint is going to be much, much lower. And so we also, solar hot water is part of this project and is in the GMP. And so essentially, the energy engineer has told us that, you know, during the fall and the spring and so forth, you know, you're going to be generating 50% of your hot water load with the solar hot water. So in effect, you're saving 50% of your gas loads in the fall and in the spring to get the hot water to the temperatures you need to do the dishes and so forth in the dining hall. I think our PowerPoint is stuck.
Any additional questions for Ron?
Just, and really, maybe not even pertaining to this project, but I was just trying to scientifically understand. Well, you mentioned our use of electricity increases, natural gas goes down, our carbon footprint goes down. Is that because electricity is generating less CO2 emissions than if we were using natural gas, or is it because we're not using natural gas on-site and we're not counting the CO2 generated from an electric-generating power plant?
Oh, so that's a great question. So there's a difference between site energy and source energy, right? So site energy is actually what are we creating in terms of carbon footprint at the site? So when we're burning fossil fuels, we're creating a lot more carbon at the site, not the source, but the site. Same thing with electricity. You know, how much carbon are you creating through use of that electricity at the site? Well, that's actually zero, right? So then if you look at the source, the nice thing about New Hampshire, and northern New England, actually, is a lot of the electricity is actually created through renewable energy systems, nuclear and hydroelectric. So what that means is even the generation of that electricity doesn't create as much carbon as, obviously, the fracking that goes on to get the natural gas, or importing, you know, the natural gas from other states. And so, now, having said that, there are still, you know, CO2-causing power plants in the Northeast. The hope, and this is like when it comes to future-proofing a project for a school, the hope is that in the future, much less fossil fuels will be used, much more renewable energy, such as solar panels, will be used. And so that's something that you're sort of geared towards the future in setting that up to even drive that carbon footprint down further.
Great. Thank you. It's very interesting.
Should we proceed?
Which over to Andre.
Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So Andre, would you like to take the podium and talk about the guaranteed price that
This is why I like paper.
It's good to have a backup.
Okay. We're almost. Oh, you gotta be kidding.
Well, I can do this.
Yeah.
So good evening, audience and all the white members. So over the past six weeks, Bond Corporation and about 95 other suppliers and subcontractors have been working very diligently, a lot of long hours, to come up with a price that we can guarantee for the new school project. So this guaranteed matching price that we're going to present this evening, it comes from plans which are in what's called the design development phase. So that means that a lot of details are present, but some still have to be worked out. And so when you try to estimate from a set of plans like that, it generates many, many, many more questions from the people trying to price it. So both our architects and their engineering consultants have done a marvelous job over the past six weeks, answering a lot, a lot of questions, so that everyone was able to give us a very confident number at the end of the process. They said we had 95 participants in the pricing exercise. The other thing I want to note is that the construction industry continues to be very busy, and competition for the larger, highly-capable subcontractors that we need for this project is at a premium. So we have recommended that certain of the key subs be brought on board as early as next month. And since we can't make a firm commitment to any of the subcontractors until after the bond vote, this would be done at no obligation to the SAU. But what we found is that by bringing some of the important subs, such as a site work contractor, the concrete guys, the electrical, the mechanical, the sprinkler, the ones that take a lot of coordination, by getting them on board early, it allows them to work with the engineering consultants and the architect to give you, or give them, rather, a lot of input, and it makes sure that they keep the budget numbers right online and can keep us in good shape financially. So we are very pleased to report that, you know, we've, after probably 1,200 hours of estimating time between all of us, we can provide a GMP of construction part of the project of $45,000, $45,102,11. Then if you add soft costs, which includes things like architectural engineering fees, FFNE costs, which is your furniture, fixtures, equipment, and various other fees that are estimated at about $4,740,811, the total project GMP for the March bond vote would And I think you all have a copy of our summary GMP estimate to take a look at. The other thing we wanted to talk about, or I guess before I go into that, are there questions on what we've presented so far?
I don't have a question, but I might as well. This is, Tom Newkirk was unable to be here because he's at a conference, and he did ask that I read this statement. So he says he wishes to express his deep appreciation for the tireless work of the architects, construction manager, and the middle school committee that has worked together to get us to this point. It was truly a reiterative process with the architects proposing, listening, modifying, always in full collaboration with Andre, who had to translate plans into costs. The big question all along was, could we build a school we envisioned for the costs that we set out? On Friday, we learned that the answer was yes. My hope is that we can use the guaranteed maximum price as the bonding figure and work to persuade voters that we will be getting a wonderful school at costs we can manage, and that to delay will only raise costs. I am absolutely convinced that future generations of teachers, students, parents, and townspeople will look back gratefully to the work being done to make this school a reality.
So as the process moves forward, if we have an affirmative vote in March, architects will finalize the plans, and that's the process that, what we want to concentrate on, of course, is the site work. Site work would begin May 11th, and we've been working with the staff at the middle school to prepare them for what construction activities will mean to them. I think we have a good logistics plan in formation so far. And while we plan way before May 11th to have the site permit in place so that we can get started on May 11th. And what is really important is the site project is a huge project, and it's not really something that smaller site work contractors are able to do. So we're very fortunate to have had some of the larger companies in the state prices for us. Bidding was very competitive. So we have someone that, you know, we can bring on board whenever the decision is made. They're a very large company that have the horsepower to do the amount of work that has to be done. The overall construction schedule, as you probably have heard in the past, is for us to get the school up and have the staff and students move in during February vacation That's an ambitious schedule, but one that I think if everything is done the way we've talked about is doable. And once we move the students into the new building, we will immediately take down the old one. By the time, you know, summer rolls around, we'll be working on the new turf field and the remainder of the parking and access road. So, you know, there's a lot of other steps that go along the way. We still will have a round of bidding for especially interior subcontractors and, you know, various components of the project once the plans are fully completed. But what we think is real important is that, you know, steel, if we have a good steel supplier on board, that concrete companies are very, very hard to come by, especially ones large enough to do this. So we've had very good competitive pricing from companies. We have someone, you know, ready to go on that. So what that allows us to do is know that if the project gets approved, that we have really good companies ready to step in and start the work. And in the meantime, they'll be giving us the input that we need as far as developing the right length schedule to complete their various tasks.
Several red lines that have other GMPs in the different slides that Ron flipped through while you were speaking. What are the other GMPs that we, other GMP models?
Well, that's a little bit of a misnomer. The GMP is the GMP.
Okay.
So the plan is that as we go through the project, if if we get better bids, they just get rolled into the contingency. So, the contingency is one of those things that I have to control that until we get to certain points of the project.
Should go back to that slide, Andre.
The unfortunate part of the schedule is that the school that we have to demolish has some unknowns in it. So, we have to save some of the contingency. We've gotten two very close bids taking it down, but there are a couple of unknowns that, you know, we have to save some contingency for those type of things. But the contingency parts of it will start to get released as the project moves forward. And it's to the discretion of the school district how they, you know, spend that money.
So, the contingency in the project as within the guaranteed maximum price is one million, seven-hundred eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's because, you know, Andre right now is locked and loaded with these subs. But between now and the March vote, things could vary from where he is right now. That gives him the confidence to say tonight that forty-nine million, eight-hundred forty-two thousand, seven-hundred thirty-two dollars is the price. So, that, it won't go beyond that, and we can guarantee that to the voters. And when we start talking about this tonight and tomorrow and in all the other meetings I go to, I'll switch over to this number because it's locked and loaded.
And another question, just curiosity. In Division Six Wooden Plastics, there's a line that reads "casework, no trash stations dash owner furnishing," and a question mark. And I just didn't have any idea what that meant.
So, there are recycling stations in each of the pods on the third and fourth floors. And that's something that will come out of the furnishings budget that is in that four million, nine-hundred thousand dollar number that I mentioned. So, it just was excluded by the casework suppliers because there were no details on that at this point. It's something that you typically just buy off the shelf.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Where does the demolition show up in here?
Under site work first, the line.
All right, building demolition, yep. Well, thank you very much.
Well, I tell you, it's been a pleasure to work with the building committee. A lot of really good input every meeting. And, you know, we have our fingers crossed. It's potentially a wonderful building for the district. Hopefully, it'll get good support. We'd love to build it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Okay, so, I guess we should have done approval of agenda first, probably, but we'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Have a motion, okay? Brian, second. Dan, all in favor? All right, it is seven, I mean, six in favor, and student rep in favor? All right, public comments?
Big number. Hey, I wanted to talk a bit about the start time. Along with our change in the start time, we shortened the school day. I've been coaching math counts, and I happened to find out that algebra class is now, in the middle school, is forty minutes long. And they don't give any weekend homework, but there still is pressure to do better. And so, well, anyway, I guess the bottom line would be, I'm hoping that we look into the effect of the shorter day when we look into the effect of the changing start time. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Other? Oh, so we got you, okay.
I wanted, I'm Susan Richmond. I live in Cal Drive in Durham. And I want to talk about the possibility of student voter registration. But just a comment before that, with the building, I'm sorry, I didn't weigh in before all, but if you are dependent on natural gas, there should be the ability to get off natural gas if the town decides to have zero fossil fuel at some point. And I know heat pumps are another kind of technology that are a possibility. Okay, so anyhow, high school voter registration, we are just seeing that students now are so involved politically, and that needs to be honored. And they are required to take citizenship education, or some places we call it civics. So, that's sort of a natural culmination of such a class to have kids actually register and peer in the school to become a voter. We give them driver education and help ease that. So, the idea that the high school helps kids move into their adult citizenship is another reason why voter registration in the school makes sense. And also, not every child can easily, or student can easily depend on having a grown-up that's going to get them to the town offices. So, when it happens right here, when there's kind of a feeling of a campaign in the school that everyone joins on, it becomes a popular thing to do, and voting becomes popular. I know that same-day registration is a possibility, but the long lines usually discourage participation. And I assume that the school administration can also help assist students with all the documentation they need, that you can vouch for their address, for their birth date, for their citizenship status. So, I guess the big problem for some school districts, such as Oyster River, is you have several towns feeding in. So, a town like Bowe, New Hampshire, I understand, has voter registration. It's just one town. And I have a friend in Newmarket who's looking into that. But I work in Exeter, and they have six feeder towns. And I don't think they got all six to participate. I think it was just four or five, but that's something. There are other models I heard in Washington State that when it's your, the week of your birthday, you're called down to the office and you register then. And for all I know, you're toasted with root beer or whatever. But it just seems like a really important rite of passage that the school could offer. And I'm talking to some people. Oh, and other things that I know are happening, I believe Kent Street Coalition for the second year, and they're out of Concord, is going to be writing principles of all high schools and charter high schools. And they got feedback from a number of schools last year. And they even had a pamphlet of, you know, different models that schools could try for setting this up. And I understand 350 New Hampshire will be distributing pledge to vote cards in some high schools, but that's still not as great as if you really can do it right here at the school. So, I will, I guess I have contacted the school board, I mean, the town council here in Durham. And I will again, and I'll get hold of Barrington, Lee, and Madbury. Other than that, any suggestions you can offer me how I can do this without stepping on toes? I'd like to. My comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Hall, Durham. I could have been more pleased to see this presentation tonight. I showed up here in the forties at your school you're replacing. That school was designed with eight rooms for eight classes, eight grades. You spent, the class spent its whole day with the same teacher, the same room, seven day, day in, day out, five days a week. The only change was the seventh and eighth grade swapped classrooms for English and math. So, that building was way overdue by the time the sixties rolled around. It had four lights hung, whether I think a two-hundred-and-fifty-watt light bulb in each globe, wooden floors, wooden joists stuck into masonry walls, which, boy, you can't take that thing down fast enough to suit me. But more importantly, the way they teach today, and helping Mr. Goldsmith, I understood this better this afternoon, that building is a nightmare. I remember replacing the bathrooms not too long ago. It is just so far overdue, not only from a structural standpoint, but from the way that we go about teaching school and the way the business is conducted. And those middle years, I think, are very, very important. I think we've done a good job with our other schools, and I'm absolutely delighted. One thing to clarify, this got nothing to do with the school, but remember, they've had to start burning coal in Bow. Comes in by ship, gets hauled by truck to Bow, and it's burned. I don't know why they don't use rail. And that is a direct result of not bringing down Northern Pass. Northern Pass would be four square miles of right-of-way for the power line. It could be sixteen-hundred megawatts. Isn't enough to run the state, but that nuclear is what we've got to aim at. All this other stuff, by all means, put solar panels on your building. If people like it and they'll vote for the building, that's fine. But seriously, nuclear and solar, there is absolutely no way around that.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Excuse me, nuclear and hydro.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, so, let's see. We are up to approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the November sixth regular meeting minutes? Brian, a second. Al? Okay, any corrections? Right here. Okay, wow, no corrections, okay. All in favor of approving the minutes. We have five in favor, student rep is favor. Are you abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, one abstained.
Wasn't here, so.
Wasn't here, okay. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? From the district tonight? None? Okay. From the board? Kenny?
I have three things. Susan Richmond kind of stole the thunder on one of them, but I greatly support us trying to figure out a way to facilitate registering eligible voters in our school. And I certainly am willing to volunteer if that is needed to help to bring that to fruition. I think Susan laid out the points, and I fully support that. Just want to touch on the Orchard Drive property. And again, very much thank the district and the school board for facilitating the purchase of that land through donations that town Durham was able to purchase. And some news on that is that already through a lot of volunteer work, the trail linking that Orchard Drive property to the New Hampshire UNH forest lots, the Thompson lots that are there, that trail is already completed. And just yesterday, we learned that a grant that we submitted to the New Hampshire, I believe they call it recreational trails, that tries to connect communities to trails and outdoors, we won a grant for eighty thousand dollars. So, the money is through the fundraising, that grant, and some other grants, we now have enough money to construct the bridge. And for our district, it's really neat because the kids that now live in that Orchard Drive neighborhood can now easily walk to school because all they have to do is go across a little bridge, and they're in the faculty neighborhood. It combines that. And then our goal, of course, is that trail will lead you from downtown all the way to our Go Farm property. And lastly, just in, you know, knowing that our school is really dealing with kind of the issue of vaping and the great numbers of vaping, on our town council meeting on Monday, we unanimously passed an ordinance that raises the threshold for selling or purchasing tobacco, tobacco-related products, vaping, vaping-related products to the age of twenty-one. Knowing that's not the perfect solution, knowing it's not the end of a problem. I mean, the way I really looked at it is if fifteen kids don't get addicted to nicotine because it's harder to get, it's all worthwhile. So, just wanted to share all that with the board.
Other board comments? I have two. First of all, I attended the Peking Opera Night, which was put on, I believe, by UNH, but Confucius Institute, and which we obviously are affiliated, have an affiliation with. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful night. It was held at the Johnson Theater. The second thing I wanted to mention is that the first mouth of the river of the year, this is the student news magazine, high school news magazine. It's wonderful, and people can subscribe to it. If you want it delivered right to your home, you can do that. And it's just a wonderful, you know, I'm very impressed always with the writing that the students do. Any other comments? Nope. Okay, so, district reports, assistant superintendent report. Okay, superintendent's report?
Just a few things. My, what I call my dance card I'm putting in your folders continues to grow. And, you know, I gave you a report from the very first house party, which was hosted by John and Diana Carroll. And just an amazing meeting, over thirty attendees, the very people that we were hoping would attend these house parties did. And meaning that they weren't directly associated with the school system, seniors and people whose children have already gone through the system. The great questions. I had one question that I actually have to continue to work on, and I'll need Jay's help to do that. And that was, the question was, you know, what are we doing to prepare the school for as little disruption as possible while the building is going up? And I thought that was a great question, and it'll be another one that I have to attack. Another question that came up that I really built out in the last couple of days is what does the do-nothing option mean? And so, that was a brief paragraph on our webpage, and I've actually turned that into a full-page answer because doing nothing is very costly to the district, and I wanted the community to know that. And that came out of Sunday's meeting as well. Today, we had our second house party, and that was hosted by Julie Kelly. And I want to thank all of, you know, the Collinses and the Kellys for hosting these because it's really, it's a much more intimate way of dealing with the project and getting new faces in the room. And they had also had great questions, and the age range from there was high school-age parents, parents of high school-age students, all the way to seniors. One of the seniors' name was Noelle, which I thought was really cool. It was the first time I met her, but Todd had known her for years. And she is a senior in town and was so enthusiastic for this project. It was, both Todd and I left, really, our batteries were charged because the feedback was so powerful. We have two more house parties already scheduled, and one in the works. So, what I would say to the community and to the school board is, if you have friends, neighbors, or relatives who'd like to host a house party, which just basically means, you know, bring together a half dozen to a dozen people, whatever, you know, whatever the neighbor, the house party host feels comfortable with, there really are a host of people who can do the presentation now. Obviously, me, and Todd, and Jay, and Bill. I want to point out that this week Denise is going to help us. She's going to host one of the booths on our play. She's going to host the booth on Thursday night. And I'm going to host Friday night, and Todd's going to host Saturday night. And so, we're starting to be able to share this work with a number of people. Brian has reached out to say, let me know what I can do. So, if any board member is in a position where, you know, you feel comfortable at a particular event, let me know. We'll give you the materials, and you can go to town as well. I think the more activity we have around this and the more presentations we have, the better. So, you know, the, as I call my dance card, is getting full, but we can make it fuller. As far as I'm concerned, we could be out every single day from now until March tenth. The idea is to saturate the information in the community so people can make informed decisions. And we still are doing the select board and council presentations. We're still doing. We're still doing larger public presentations. We did one last week at Moheramet. We'll continue to put those in the schedule. But I think as we shift towards March, these more intimate meetings have a lot more power to them. So I wanted to thank people for doing that and open up to the community who's listening. If you want to host a party, let us know, and we'll make it happen. Then, going back to Kenny's point on vaping, last Friday, we did do a vaping workshop here at high school. We had an organization come in. Sadly, it wasn't as well-attended as I thought it would be, but I do want to emphasize Kenny's point that this is a health crisis for people who are, who rapidly become addicted to vaping. The science right now is it's in the oil that they're using that creates the smoke. And the danger for us is that adolescent lungs are developing. We've had significant respiratory problems already being addressed in our high school. So I don't think we can underestimate the damage that vaping is doing to our society. And it is impacting Oyster River as well. So I want to thank the council for taking that initiative. And as Kenny said, it's not the solution, but if everybody does a little bit, then eventually all the little bits becomes a big bit. And so we're continuing to focus on it at the high school. I'm really thrilled that the council did as well. So thank you, Kenny. Ben? Al? That's it.
Okay. The UNH presentation for the high school participation in the NSF survey.
Good evening. I'm going to be introducing Delilah Smith. She's from UNH's Prevention Innovation Research Center at UNH. We have worked with the center before. They worked with us with the bringing in the bystander program that we implement in the high school. And so Delilah is going to speak, Delilah's going to speak with you a little bit about the new program that we've been speaking with them about.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Delilah Smith from the University of New Hampshire Prevention Innovations Research Center. Prevention Innovations Research Center is an internationally recognized organization known for its community engagement and collaborative research that informs violence prevention, policy, and practice. I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about a project funded by the National Science Foundation to develop a mobile app that will promote healthy relationships among high school students. It's our hope that upon completion of this project, New Hampshire high schools will be given the access to this mobile app and encouraged to use the app to support your current and future social-emotional learning initiatives. The project includes three phases. And schools, we're asking schools to participate in one, two, or all three of these phases. The first phase is initial data gathering. And what we're looking to do is, across schools in New Hampshire and Maine, is to gather data via focus groups and interviews with administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Our hope is to gather that data by January of 2020, bring it back to the lab, create a prototype that we will then bring back to the schools, gather additional feedback. And at Phase Three, we go back to Prevention Innovations Research Center and actually develop the product. Once the product is developed, we will then bring it back into our high schools with the hope that our high schools will then utilize this app with the feedback that everyone has provided. In the next few slides, I'm going to just kind of walk you through one of our, it's called USafe US, and it's a college-based app with the caveat that the content within the app is going to look extremely different than the high school app, but some of the features may stay the same. And I'm just going to highlight a few of those features. One of the features we have is what we call time to leave, which allows students to send a fake call or a fake text that gets them out of uncomfortable situations. And this is, this is a feature that students can actually use the timer on. So if I would like, as a user, if I'd like a fake call or a fake text, I can time that to text me or call me within a half an hour. The second, the second feature I'd like to highlight is expect me. Expect me is a feature that allows the user to notify up to three friends or family members that they are on their way home or on their way to work, and to expect them at a certain time. What's great about this feature is that it will notify a friend or a family member 45 minutes into that, you know, that, once the student leaves or once the user leaves. And then it'll notify that friend or family member 15 minutes before they actually arrive. And then if they don't arrive, the text continues to come until the user disables that. And the feature that I really like and I think is going to be beneficial on a possible high school app is the Find Help app. That actually allows the school, it's a customizable feature, and allows the school to place all the school resources and all the community resources right there on that feature. And so they have access to all of the resources within the community and the school itself. And those are just a few examples. But our hope is, and just to let you know that when we, our hope is when we collect that data, which is Phase One, which is where we're at right now, we're, we have agreements with 10 schools throughout New Hampshire and Maine, both private and public. And our hope is to go in and conduct those focus groups with teachers, admins, and parents and students. But we're not, we're not looking at content specifically. We're really looking at the way schools and students utilize apps, what they want from an app and how they use an app. And that's really our primary focus.
So the board knows that in order to do a survey in the system, our policy and state law requires that you authorize it. And this would be strictly a voluntary survey, very small focus groups from the, from our school system and 10 others. And both Suzanne and I have sat with Diana and Delilah, and we are very supportive of this initiative. We think it fits right into our mental health and safety initiatives. And where other schools are doing it, I think the broad spectrum of feedback will only provide the Research Innovation Center with quality information, and I think Oyster River should be part of it.
I have one, which is the information that we received, you know, prior to the meeting. It was a survey, and so I heard you talk about focus groups. Could you just explain where the survey would fit in?
Absolutely. Great question. Thank you. The survey, when we arrive at the site, we, only with students and student focus groups, there is a pre-survey that asks them, again, mobile-use app, and there are a few questions within that survey, which I believe you have, and if you don't, I can provide that, that asks about relationships in general, and relationships with friends, relationships with families. So it's a, it's a pre-survey that we will administer with students.
The examples that you show, and I understand, of course, they're not exclusive, but they seem to be more related to safety, being able to get out of a situation or letting somebody know, I should be where I'm at, if I'm not, come look for me. Is there other elements, other depth to what you're looking at, or is that the focus?
It's hard for us to say because we really want to develop the app based on student, teacher, administrator feedback. However, our college-based app, there's a lot more to it. There's a lot of content. For instance, there's a decision tree that walks students through questions that they may have about their relationship. And so there's, it's on the response-based features, it's very content-driven, and there is a lot of content. We've done some focus groups with high schools thus far, and what's coming out of that is possible short quizzes that assess their relationships that they're currently in, from that to tracking their moods and the relationships they're currently in. So we're in the real infancy phases of collecting the data that may develop this app. So it's really hard for me to say, but I can speak from the college-based app in that there is quite a bit of content.
And is the app then made available to anyone who wants to, you know, kind of engage with it? Is that how that works?
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
And would UNH be taking that app forward? How?
The high school-based app, if, when developed?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. And our hope is, with, like, for example, with our college-based app, it's within 22 of our colleges and universities throughout New Hampshire. And our hope is to, when we develop this high school-based app, that that is true for our high schools, and our high schools will have access to that at free of charge.
So we need a motion and a second to approve it?
Okay. So I have a vote, a motion to approve. Brian? Second? Okay. Michael? Any other questions? All right. All in favor of approving the participation in the survey? All right. Six in favor, student rep is in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the last time we met, we talked about the budget. You didn't have revenues. So I prepared three separate options for you on my traditional color-coded sheet that I hope gives you all the information you need. Again, the budget is at the top, revenue is to the right, and then tax impact. Three different options. One was using, without using any expendable trust funds. Just of note, one of the things we were waiting for was the update from the state in terms of adequacy. And over in the green, in kind of the middle of the sheet, you can see the change. Durham did not receive any additional funding, but the change in Durham's is a result of the calculation and the formula based on a membership, so that went down a little bit. And then both Lee and Madbury received additional funding. I don't have the exact numbers, but that's also due to the change in the formula, those numbers. So you can see without using the trust funds what the tax rate would be in those three communities. If you, using option number one, up in the blue section, you have exceeded your 3.5 using option number one. Ready to move on to option two? So option two utilizes $100,000 of bond interest. Remember, when we go out to bond, we'll be putting that money in an account, and that huge amount of money will, and some interest, so we anticipate $100,000 of that could be used to offset. That automatically goes into fund balance. So utilizing that, I've added that to the revenue side in the green, and that just shows the impact on the three towns in terms of tax rate. Questions on option two? And then the last option is option three would be utilizing the same $100,000 in bond interest and also $150,000 in the expendable trust funds, again, adding that to the revenue side. What this does is that brings your blue section down to the 3.53. And then it shows where the tax rate would come in with those funds.
So here's my question. What do you, I'm closing this microphone. So if you use either option two or three, which is utilizes the interest off the bond, what if the bond doesn't pass?
Well, that is, so your revenues are not something you declare and you vote on. So that's pending whether you have them or not, and they're adjustable. So if the bond doesn't pass, you won't need that, so you won't have it, and it won't be in your fund balance. So follow that? In other words, you vote on a budget, you don't vote on revenue?
So we're back to option one?
1.1%.
In comparing option two to option one, if the bond doesn't pass, we're back to option one?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But the bond doesn't pass, you're also reduced your budget from a 3.5% to like 2.4%. So the numbers of the tax impact would change accordingly. So in terms of the expendable trust fund, we have about, in the various accounts, about $1.2 million. And so part of the thought process that Sue and I put together was, the reduction in Medicaid revenue was pretty significant. It was about $150,000. So by using the expendable trust fund, we're basically covering our Medicaid account. And if that Medicaid account is, if we've underestimated it, which is a possibility because we're in a new paradigm now, then we wouldn't need it. And you wouldn't have to make a decision on the trust fund until well into the budget year.
Well, right around tax rate-setting time is when we would look at that.
Late October.
Yep. Late September, early October.
Late September.
Why do I? It's like habit, right? So one concern that I have is that because we are moving the $523,000 bond payment out of our operating budget and into, it's got to be on the warrant as part of the bond, so that's $523,000. If the bond doesn't pass, that's $523,000 that gets caught basically out of our budget. Like, it's money we don't have because it wasn't in our operating budget, it's on the bond. So I was asking Sue about this before the meeting and asking if we put, let's see if I say this right, because we had this discussion, but if we, if we had, if we put some of the money or additional money into the operating budget that we then, if the bond does pass, we don't need it, then we can put it in the fund balance.
In the following year.
For the following year.
But what you put in the budget will impact the tax rate because that will be raised for next year.
For that year. Right. My big concern, just to have something to think about, is just by, if the, and it's all fine if the bond passes, it's not an issue. But if the bond doesn't pass, we lose that $523,000 that is just gone. And we presumably come back the next year to try and pass the middle school. We now have $523,000 less money, you know, because it's sort of like, if you think of that capital improvement plan, we've basically have lowered that capital improvement plan by $523,000. So it's just something to think about. I'm not sure quite how we can do it. It's just a huge gamble. That's my concern.
But as you said, the hole is filled because you lose that out of your CIP.
Right.
So it's not like you're short $523,000 if the budget doesn't pass.
Well, it's gone, though. It's not available. Yeah.
Payment on the, the interest on the bond is also.
Right. But then that's less money that you have the following year. You'd have to find another $523,000 somehow.
In theory.
Yes.
So the presenting these options to you tonight isn't for decision-making. It's really for you to take and contemplate different issues and different ways of resolving how you want to establish the 3.5%. You know, option three meets the goal both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, which is really what we were trying to do, and we wanted to show you how we would do it. But we're not looking for you to make a decision tonight. We're really just looking for you to have that for the December 4 meeting. And we'll spend the December 4 meeting going through this. Hopefully, the board will be positioned at that point to make a decision related to the options, and we can move forward that much closer to having a recommended budget for 2021.
And fully understanding that, just so I could understand too, so we kind of work on a cycle where we do a budget each year. And certainly, what we pass as a budget each year sets us up for the budget in the following year if we're looking at percentage increases. And in that vein, just wondering if what we're trying to do is keeping at the 3.5 goal by digging into the expendable trust, that $150,000. And I'm not sure, I'm really asking, is, how does that position us for next year's budget? And is that going to, is there going to be a little bit of a hole we're digging ourselves into because of that?
Not necessarily, because, you know, like, for example, in this particular, this past budget, we had said that the communities we would... past budget, we had said that the communities we would pass through $400,000 fund balance to impact taxes. And collectively, the board decided to send through 700,000. So, we could have just as easily said, we're going to take that, in this case, 150,000, replenish the trust fund and send 150,000 more than the 300 to the town. So, at the end of the budget year, Sue is always in a position, has been always in a position, always is a hard word when you're looking into the future, but always is true when we look at all of our past work together, there's a balance, and the board makes a decision how to move that balance forward. And this particular year, we used it all to offset taxes, largely because we were super concerned about the town of Lee. So, this time last year, we anticipated that the impact was going to be $1.92 on the town of Lee in relation to the budget we passed. And of course, we were all very anxious about that. The reality is, it turned out to be 92 cents, and the reason it was is threefold. One, the town of Lee itself took $300,000 out of its reserve account. The state provided additional revenue to this town of Lee of 150,000. And then this board passed 300,000 additional money through to each of the three towns, which had an impact on the town of Lee. So, we always have to remember when we see these estimates that they are truly estimates. And that when, so far, Sue and I, when we've made these estimates, we're always conservative, and we end up someplace less than where we are here today when we set tax rates a year from now at the end of September. So, you know, the bottom line, I guess, Kenny, is our starting point this year is far better than our starting point at this point last year. And I would expect, based on history, that the actual tax impact will be less than we're seeing here. So, it all boils down to how well we walk through the budget process as we are using the funds. So, Sue and I tend to be both on the same page in terms of being relatively conservative as we go through the budget year. If we feel uncomfortable at all, then we slow down the budget. We've only, I think, done that once in the seven budgets that we've gone through together. But, it's always a possibility. So, you know, one way of compensating for $100,000 is simply to go through and literally put a red line on $100,000 worth of expenditures. That's one way of doing it. The other way is to just watch your expenditures as you go through, which Sue does for you every single month when we get into a budget, and make sure we're still on track to have a balance. So, that's the other way we do it.
Okay. Maybe analogous to the contingency portion of the middle school kind of project, is we've got some built-in flexibility.
Exactly, yeah. I think we were, you know, and I think that's very, very likely that we were to replace $150,000 if we used it. We've been really good at keeping that account at a place where it's healthy, and this is why we do it. Because two things are impacting this budget that we weren't anticipating. One is that we flatlined the Barrington tuition other than the growth of the tuition cost, and we put two extra students in instead of 10. And then we really, you know, in terms of looking at this budget, are thinking through to the next one. You know, if the bond passes, we have a big hurdle in the next year. This year, we had a $532,000 hurdle that's in the budget for the bond. Next year, it's 730. The good news is, the year after that, it's 330. So, you know, and Michael's been good at helping me articulate this, and he'll probably help me tonight, but you know, we do have flexibility in our capital account that we can adjust to meet our bonding obligations. And, you know, Denise's observation is that we took it out of the operating budget, the bond money, and put it into the warrant. That's where, you know, I kind of followed my way through in our first meeting because I was carrying it in the operating budget, and it was blowing the doors off of our budget goal. So, it's, so by shifting the bond, we have to, because that's the law, but it also allowed me to hit the budget goal that you were looking for. And we have to hit the budget goal, not just on the expenditure side, but on the revenue side. And that's why we kind of crafted these three options, so you can see how we would do it. And if, ultimately, it's up to you guys to make a decision to support it.
Thank you.
Yep. Michael?
All right. So, in the green section, in the revenue section, the MS24 is the MS24 for fiscal year 20. Is that right?
Right, tax rate 19.
Yeah, okay. And the next column is actually fiscal year 21 projected?
That's projected, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, that's, it says fiscal year 20.
Yeah, I probably should say 21.
Okay, great. Have you done a estimate of what the default would look like yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll have that for the revenue night.
Okay. The, I don't understand how, where the bond sale slash interest revenue, how that fits in. Where is that coming from, if we were to do that?
So, when we sell the bond in August, that will be put in a bank account, and it will gain interest over time.
And the payment is in February or something like that?
Right, correct. But we'll be paying out from that, too. Remember, that money's going to be utilized for, and I still haven't received, I don't know what, how much and when. I need a timeline on, you know, how much you're going to need when. So, that 100,000 is an approximate, it might be high, depending on, you know, I might have to, come August, we might have to relinquish 10 million of it. You know, who knows how much they'll need up to that point.
Will Andre be able to provide some insight on that?
Yes, I've asked him for that. Now that he's done the guaranteed maximum, he can do that.
Right.
And then, one of the other things we'll have to do is we'll have to do a bond anticipation note to get us from March to August, because we'll need that money. We'll be, as soon as they start working, they're going to need funds, but we're not going to be able, they won't, Bond Bank has changed their bond sale, so the money isn't available till August. It wasn't, it wasn't available till July in the past, so we still would have had to have done a ban, a bond anticipation note.
So, what is, I don't understand what a bond anticipation note is.
So, when they start working on your project in May, you need money.
Right.
And we're not selling bonds with the Bond Bank until July, and the money won't be available till August 1st. So, that little bump in the time, we'll need money, and that's the bond anticipation note. There's a takeout.
That comes from the Bond Bank?
Yes.
Oh.
It's part of the process.
So, basically, the voters have approved the bond, and it's not issued until August. Because the voters have approved the bond, we're in a position to do a bond anticipation note to cover that window.
Okay.
Okay. My last question is, so we're using, as the Fund 10 number, the general fund number, we're using the number you provided last, at the last meeting, which was with the reduced amount of capital?
Right, right here, this one.
Yes, okay. Have we identified yet what capital, what changes in the CIP?
Yes.
In order to achieve that?
Yeah, we have met, but we felt that that was part of the discussion for the first meeting in December, is part of the whole budget workshop we'll be doing. But we can put that in, Michael, we can, we can put those recommendations in a mailing to the whole board if you think that's, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Did we get it in advance?
Yes, yes, definitely would like to see that. Because again, that's going back to my concern, is that we've, you've cut the CIP in order to accommodate that 523,000. But if the bond doesn't pass, that 523,000 is gone, we've lost all those CIP projects, and we, it just puts us in a real difficult position, like, moving forward, basically.
So, we would give you the administrative recommendations, but of course, it's ultimately the board that makes the decision. So, we can get that out in a mailing.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Student Senate report.
So, last week, each grade level completed the VAB education, even though, in my opinion, I think that it was shown a little too late. I think it was still a great way to raise awareness for like, the health effects that are happening on us. Also, winter sports are starting, and on November 21st to 23rd at 7:00 PM, the ORHS drama is going to present Little Women. And tickets cost $5 for students and 8 for adults. And everyone is looking forward to Thanksgiving break next week.
All right, thank you. The World Language Report. Thank you for your patience.
First of all, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to perform this task, to take a look at World Language in the district. It's been a very fun group. I want to start out by just introducing all the members of the, of the committee that have served on it, and they're all here. So, when I call your name, please raise your hand and wave. Andrea Burkle, she's a Moheramit parent. Kristin Labris, another Moheramit parent. And we have Anita Mathur, a Mastway parent. We have Kate Zamar, a Mastway teacher and also a district parent. We have Candace French, a middle school Spanish teacher. It's kind of ironic, her name is French, but she teaches Spanish. That's been a joke amongst the committee throughout the whole time. Leslie Ayers is a high school Spanish and French teacher. David Goldsmith, I think he's hiding in the back over there. Misty Lowe, Mastway. Jay Rashard, obviously, the middle school principal, and of course, myself. It's actually been a very fun group to work with. One of my strongest images is when we loaded four of us in my Subaru to drive down to Glastonbury, Connecticut at 6 o'clock in the morning, to get down there for the start of school, to spend the day observing a school. You really get to know, know people in that environment, especially when you have a hard time finding coffee at that time of the morning. So, but it was a lot of fun. We had a great time, it's a great group. Just to remind you, you know, the charge that you, the board gave us at the beginning, to investigate current research related to effective elementary world language programs, to identify the obstacles faced, including how world language would fit into the schedule, and to present best practice options with a preliminary report by May, with a final report for consideration in November. Actually, your original charge said September, but when I came to you in May and said, please, can you give me till November? You changed it, and I thank you for giving us that extra time, because it really was very important. So, kind of give you an idea of our process. The committee was formed in January, and we began meeting in February. We've been meeting once or twice a month throughout the school year. Started off by doing some research. We looked at a number of different research documents from Middlebury and Brown and a number of other major institutions to kind of give us that sense of what best practice is. I would also comment that Leslie is on sabbatical this year studying world language, so she's been a great resource to the committee to be able to keep, you know, pointing us in the right direction and helping us really focus in on things. We then, from the research, identified some model programs that we felt were worthy of visiting, and we visited seven programs. I'm going to, I'm going to test my memory right now to kind of run through those. We visited, I mentioned Glastonbury, Connecticut. We went to Keene, New Hampshire. We went to Dover Sherborne, Mass. We went to Rye, New Hampshire, Newington, East, did I say East Kingston already? East Kingston, and then St. Patrick's School in Portsmouth. All of them had various types of K4 world language programs in various states of evolution, but it was a very informative process. Number one, it was informative to just go and see the world language programs in action, but it was actually kind of neat to just see different schools and see how they function, how they organize things, and how they, how they handle things. So, even beyond world language, it was, it was quite an enjoyable time. So, we spent a lot of time reviewing our current world language program. I'm sure you remember, May of 2018, our middle school, high school world language teachers did a presentation to you on a move to proficiency-based world language instruction, which has been sort of the driving force for what we've been doing curricularly with world language curriculum in the, in the district for the last couple of years and will continue to do. So, we spent a lot of time looking at that. In fact, many of the members of the committee who were not familiar with it came in and observed in our, in our classrooms to get a feel for what we were already doing ourselves, so we could have a basis of comparison as we looked at these other programs. We spent quite a bit of time talking about master schedules. That's where having the principals on the committee to be able to talk about some of the pros and cons of various parts of the schedules. So, that was, that was reviewed. And then, we spent a lot of time also talking about not just world language, but other district priorities and how those things might fit together and what might be some of the challenges in incorporating a world language program alongside of many of the other things that we're also working to accomplish. So, that's our process. So, I'm going to invite Leslie, you're starting us off, right? Leslie's going to kind of jump in and talk to you a little bit about the different types of models of world language programs that we've seen.
Hi, everybody. So, we were able to investigate three main models of world language education. Three that kind of are very different in their approach to how students learn the language. The first model that we were able to see is called the FLECS model. It is an exploratory program that kind of focuses on motivating students to become interested in learning language later on in their lives. Those models that fall under the FLECS model typically study more than one language in their entire elementary school time period. For example, Rye actually tries to do both French and Spanish for all of their students, and they actually swap back and forth every semester. When you have a FLECS model, typically what happens is the students meet for about once a week, maybe twice, for about 40 to 45 minutes. And they also are part of typically the rotating schedule of art, music, phys ed, and language. These programs that fall under the FLECS model, typically, the students will leave them and will start right at the beginning of their language study at the middle school. So, they don't leave with any extra language proficiency, they just kind of get a feel for what the culture is all about and what languages they're more drawn towards. Candace is going to speak about the FLECS model really fast.
Hi, everyone. The FLECS model is what the committee is recommending as the best fit for Oyster River Cooperative School District. It entails students meeting for multiple times a week for a shorter period of time, 25 to 30 minutes typically. And the primary goal would be to build proficiency, which aligns with our current 6 through 12 goals as we create more proficiency-based curricula as a district-wide world language team.
And the third model, which we actually were not fortunate enough to see in action, is the immersion model. This is a type of education where your staff is actually trained in both education and a foreign language. They have a high level of proficiency and are able to teach the entire elementary school curriculum in a second language. Typically, students spend their day either 50% in the target language or 90% in the target language. And we found that there's very few of those models in this area, unfortunately. And the one school that we were aware of had just started their program in the last year. Typically, at least from the few that we've heard of, they operate on a lottery system where not all students are able to engage in that type of program. So, you end up having one classroom in a certain grade level that actually works in the world language, and the others don't. So, then, we're going to speak a little bit about our recommendation. So, based on what we saw and based on all the research that we've done, we have made the recommendation to go forward with a FLECS model, which would actually articulate well with the program that we're hoping to set forth in the 6 through 12 model right now. Students that would come into this program would hopefully, by middle school, be relatively proficient, being able to say basic phrases about themselves and various topics on, in one, one specific language. Our biggest recommendation is to pick one language. Try not to swap back and forth between multiple languages, because that allows for continuity. It allows for your students to really get connected to something. And that relies heavily on having a staff member who inspires the kids to want to keep going. Most of the schools that we saw, their one language that they chose was Spanish. However, a lot of the schools recommended that, don't pick a language ahead of time, find the staff member who's going to drive that program, be it French, be it Arabic, be it whatever language you choose that the person comes with, go with that, because that person will be able to build. We also are recommending that, again, students meet two to three days a week, hopefully, for at least 25 to 30 minutes. That allows them that, that continuity, that time to really get used to the words, use them again, not forget them by the next time that they meet. And then eventually, once they move into the middle school, we would recommend that they continue with three to five days a week for longer periods of time so they can continuously build upon that aspect. There are a lot of benefits of the K through 12 proficiency-based world language models, some of which are on the slides that I know are in front of you as well. I do want to highlight just a couple of examples from schools that we visited as small groups from the committee, one of which is located in Glastonbury, Connecticut. It's a K through 12 program. It's a 26-year-old program, and it was also widely regarded as an outstanding program, an example of an outstanding program. Related to the benefit listed on the slide...
Related to the benefit listed on the slide about students being more fluent the earlier they start a language, Glastonbury, in the high school, I believe it's 96% of those students take a language, but 10% study three or more languages and 15% are studying two languages, which we felt was impressive. Another example was in Dover, Massachusetts. It's the Dover Sherborne School District. Related to students getting exposure or working on improving basic skills in other academic areas, we saw a wonderful second-grade classroom. Students were engaged, they were actively participating, moving, they were joyful, and it was really fun to watch them actually, in Spanish, entirely in Spanish, learn math. They were practicing math concepts, including less than, more than, equal to, and every moment in that educator's classroom with those students was a moment of learning, all the way from the very beginning to the end, where they were actually waiting in a line for somebody to come pick them up and bring them to their regular classroom, and they were doing some math problems, addition and subtraction. The final example that I just wanted to highlight was from our own program, the existing program, as we're working as a district to move more towards the proficiency-based. There were seventh-grade students, Spanish students recently, who were working on a task that was meant to be more authentic and meaningful and relevant, which would align with this FLECS model, foreign language in elementary schools that we're recommending as the committee, in the sense that proficiency-based world language, one of those components of those types of programs would be to allow students to find deeper meaning with language. And what the seventh-grade Spanish students were doing recently was to design a bedroom as if they were designing for somebody in Puerto Rico their age who might have lost a home because of the Hurricane Maria that devastated the infrastructure of Puerto Rico. And so students were using not only technology with the one-on-one devices, but an authentic application of the language to actually design as if they were creating a space and labeling it in Spanish for somebody in Puerto Rico their age. Really what we're looking to do by recommending the FLECS model, the proficiency-based, to have it align with what our current goals are as the, or with the 6th through 12 existing program, is to continue to help students and guide students through the process of respectfully navigating cultures, to help them foster an appreciation for diversity and acceptance of it, and to help them also form deeper understandings of equity, inclusion, and communication skills in general that are the tenants of language learning.
And I would like to say that the recommendation was unanimously agreed upon by the committee. We spent a lot of time on this and really believed, we talked a lot about, you know, do we want to have a program that checks the box that we have a world language program? We want to recommend what is the best practice, which is what the board asked us to do, and we feel very strongly that this is the one that makes the most sense for our school and aligns with what we are trying to accomplish already in our upper grade level. So the next component to the charge, you asked us to take a look at what were the obstacles to dealing with this, and I just, I want to be really transparent here in terms of, we want to be thinking about what are the real things that we need to overcome in order to do it. My experience with this board has been, if we identify obstacles, you guys are willing to take a look at them and try to figure out ways to resolve those. So really, there were two things that kind of came out as we looked at obstacles. One is, where does world language instruction fit into the K-5 district priorities? And then, in a second, I'll talk to you about a range of other things that we're trying to do. I would point out that one of the things that was, Candace talked about it, one of the things that we did notice in the well-developed world language programs, a lot of the other curricular issues were addressed. So for example, there's a lot of social emotional learning being taught through world language. We saw science being taught through world language. We saw math. We saw music. We saw physical education. There's lots of ways you can incorporate world language into an integrated practice. However, when you're starting a program, you've got to find a place for it to fit in, and then hopefully, over time, the program integrates. So one issue was, where do we see it fitting in? And the second one was the really obvious one. Every issue, every initiative that a school district tries to tackle comes down to, can we find the time to do it? And depending on who you talk to, this can be really a hot-button issue, because it can be a challenge to figure out what's a way to go about doing that. So let me just talk a little bit about district priorities. What is listed here, these are all, when a master schedule is built, regardless whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, you start from the premise of what are the priorities you're trying to address through this schedule? And so you build your schedule around the things that you are placing value and importance on. So currently, these are the priorities that all have an impact on daily scheduling in our elementary and middle school. MTSS programming, all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school have designed master schedules around supporting MTSS, and that does have an impact on time and space and the flexibility you have. At the elementary levels, you'll hear them talking about grade-level team meetings. At the middle school, you'll hear them talk about Bobcat time and ways to support kids. There's a scheduling component there. SEL programming. At the elementary schools, we've just started Open Circle, which is a program that, twice a week, 15 to 20 minutes. It takes time, but there's also a need to build concepts of social emotional learning into other areas as well. So that, there's a function of scheduling there. Math, we have, over the last five years, put a lot of energy into really deep dive into our math program and saying, okay, what's the best practice to make sure our kids are getting the math instruction? And we've really arrived at a, what we call the non-negotiable of an hour a day. We want kids involved in math. ELA literacy, we've actually had a committee working on this one for a couple of years, and we have arrived at a 90-minute-a-day target for trying to find the time to make sure all kids are engaged in ELA literacy-related activities, that's reading and writing and so forth. Science instruction is another area that we have made a focus. We've just adopted, two years ago, we adopted Next Generation Science standards, and so we're working to incorporate that into the classroom. Social studies is clearly another content area which will take on priority. It actually is one that is probably the most capable of being integrated into other areas. And frankly, at the elementary level, that's a lot of how it plays out. In addition to that, we have what we call our Unified Arts Programs, music, art, and wellness, physical education. We want kids to have, you know, a well-rounded experience, and our kids get a lot of value in those. And then really, there's a couple of curricular themes that, particularly at the elementary levels, there's a lot of school-wide teamwork that's being done, like Days of the Ocean, things like that at the Moheramit School. They had a STEAM day at the Mastway School this past week. But the point is, these are all things that, as teachers are planning and thinking about learning, those are all things that they're juggling as they think ahead. So certainly, thinking in terms of where does world language fit into all of that. Certainly, there are lots of places, as I've mentioned, where a well-developed world language program can show up and develop a number of these curricular topics, but it's something when you're getting started, you have to think about. The other component, this, just to give you a sense of time, this is a sample schedule from the Moheramit School, just to kind of give you an idea of what a typical day looks like. One of the things which I'll talk about in just a minute is, we do have a relative, not just relative, a significantly shorter academic day at our elementary schools than many other schools around us, and that might be something we want to spend some time talking about. But as you can see, all of the priorities that I mentioned show up in one way or another in that daily schedule. Next one, this is a sample schedule, in fact, it's Kate Zamar's sample schedule from Kate Zamar's classroom, just to give you an idea of what a week looks like in her classroom. But again, you can see where all of these priorities are finding their way in, and obviously, there's the challenge there, okay, if we were going to add world language, where would it fit in? So that's a conversation to be had. And we haven't resolved that question, we're just raising the issue. However, when we did our visits to some of the model schools, one of the things that we noted was, virtually every school that was doing this had a longer day than us, by 15 to 40 minutes. And clearly, time is a factor there. So it's something, again, to be thinking about. I mean, certainly, this lends itself to a conversation about, do we need to think about lengthening the academic day at the elementary schools? I would say, one of the things that did come up in our conversations at the committee was, even separate from world language, would we like to have more time in the day? And I think generally speaking, there is a sense that the elementary day, there's room for more time in the elementary day. I know the board, you often ask about comparable schools, and so I wanted to make sure, I don't want it to be piling on, but I figured you'd ask for these, because these are the ones that you typically compare to, but just to give you an idea, look at elementary schedules, Hanover has a 30-minute-longer elementary day, and they have a FLECS program. Portsmouth is 15 minutes longer, and they're working on adding a program, which will probably be a FLECS model, but they haven't actually established it yet. Exeter Day is 15 minutes longer than ours, and they have a FLECS program in some of their schools. Not all of their schools have world language. Bedford does not have a K-4 world language program, which is actually kind of interesting to me, since at the high school level, they have what's called an international baccalaureate program, which puts a lot of emphasis on language, so it would surprise me if they didn't eventually have an elementary world language program. And then lastly, Amherst, which is the Sauhegan School System, has a 25-minute-longer day than Oyster River, and they have a FLECS program in their school. So, what are the things that, if, to go forward with a FLECS model, what do we need to do? First of all, it would require three teachers. One of them has already been asked for, it would be that fifth-grade position that's been requested as yellow sheet the last couple of years. One of the things to keep in mind is that a space is an issue at the middle school, so Jay will probably nod his head and say yes when I say this, because he says yes to a lot of things, but certainly, we can figure out a way to make it happen if we want to move forward before the construction of the new middle school takes place, but that's an issue at the middle school. But adding that teacher, and then we would need one teacher at each of the two elementary schools to provide the program, because keep in mind, when you're talking about having two or three classes a week, times currently, there are 19 classes at Mastway and 16 at Moheramit, you're talking, you know, 48 to 57, 25 to 30-minute periods, which really is a full-time job. And the other component is, the teacher, while they're doing this, is also working with other classroom teachers to provide professional development, because one of the things we did observe is the programs that were most developed and most impactful had buy-in at the classroom level of classroom teachers. So the world language teacher didn't have their own classroom, they would come to the classroom that the kids were in, but the teacher who was the receiving classroom would have already prepped the kids, and the kids were already ready to start language. And so that was really an important component in a successful program. Beyond that, I think we have to have some conversation around academic time at the K-4 level. Again, there's, you know, do we lengthen the day, or do we look at priorities, are there some things we can do less of? And that's a conversation we haven't dove in deep enough into to say. I think the answer is somewhere in between. I did have some interesting conversation with Lisa Huppi around busing schedules, and there are some possible changes that could be made to the busing schedules that might allow us to lengthen the day without necessarily having to have it be a significant cost item, but it's something that would need to be addressed. We haven't solved that yet. And then obviously, like I said, other adjustments to the system for transportation or just master scheduling. So lastly, I just want to, we did talk about some other possible models of, like, what are some ways we could get this going soon? One option we looked at was a K-4 after-school model, which is actually already available through the Confucius Institute and One World Language. However, because it's not a school-sponsored program, it's, you know, borne by parent cost and so forth, participation of it is probably lower than if it was a school-sponsored program where we worked to alleviate many of the logistical issues. We don't recommend that model, by the way, as a plan for long-term program. It could possibly be a transition program if we wanted to get something going, to give people an opportunity to study language before we were ready to fully embark on a K-12 model. But the issue with the after-school program is, it's really not a FLECS model. What that means is, it's going to be more of a, once a week, kids would be exploring the language, they would become more familiar with it, but they're really not advancing themselves proficiency-wise doing that. The other model which we could, we took a look at was plugging it into what's called the Encore or Unified Arts Block, which would make it on a rotation. So like, currently, there are four parts to the rotation, so we could make it a five-piece rotation, and then the kids would basically have it once a week for 45 minutes. Again, for proficiency goals, you want to have it multiple times a week, even if it's for a shorter amount of times, because that's really, the key is to get kids engaging and talking in the language and experiencing it. And then obviously, the one that we have, feel very strongly is the best for our district is the K-12 proficiency-based model. And again, the reasons for it, it is a FLECS model that is focused on fluency in the language, and it would really open up the opportunity for kids to really succeed at a very high level. I can't remember if it was Candace or Leslie who said this, but one of the things that has struck us in the programs that have been around a while and have actually had the opportunity to see kids go through a world language program from K-1 all the way through grade 12, it's amazing the results they're getting. I mean, Glastonbury Model was one that we just, we all walked away going, wow, that's amazing. You have like 96% of your kids in high school studying a language, and 15% of them are graduating studying more than one, and then 10% are doing, you know, three, which is just a remarkable thing. And by the way, Glastonbury is a community very similar to Durham in terms of numbers and size and socioeconomics and so forth. So, we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Kenny?
So, just before questions, I just greatly thank all of you. It's clear tremendous effort was placed, and the research that you've done and to present us, I think, with such a clear kind of vision and what that vision entails. You know, if I was writing a script and hoping to kind of hear, you know, feedback, I think you did a wonderful job. And, you know, as, through the years that I've been on school board, I so support moving our world language program into greater depth. I think it, one, just having that language is just such a tool and a gift that I think our kids aren't getting that they should have, but I think also the research, and I think you as a committee have pointed it out to some extent as well, there's such brain development that's coincidental to learning that foreign language. So I don't think we should look at it as just as world language. We really look at it, brain development. And then two quick questions, one, and maybe one more comment. I think, two, when we talk about cost and the cost of adding three FTEs, probably, as a board, we'll also need to consider if we choose that option of extending the school day, that will certainly be reflected, I think, in guild negotiations and contracts.
Yes, absolutely.
So, that cost is there. And then the question, and you answered it partly with talking about Glastonbury, where you had kids were doing multiple world languages, because one of the things that initially I was a little concerned with, let's say we identify Spanish, and Spanish probably is a very logical language, I was wondering what would happen to our French later on? And does that become something not utilized and maybe even go away?
One of the things that we did observe at a couple of the programs that we saw, and feel free to chime in, ladies, was that most of them reached a point like we're recommending, where you get to middle school and the choices open up. So basically, the idea is, get started with a language. It largely can be any language, as long as it's language study, and you're tapping into that part of the brain and getting kids to try to learn, to kind of basically train the brain to be able to learn the languages. And what we found was, when you get to that point of being able to choose, what was happening is, many kids would get to middle school and they'd say, well, actually, I've had enough with Spanish, I'm going to switch over to French, but the study of Spanish for those first five years still made them better able to learn French, and they picked it up much more quickly. In fact, do you remember what school it was that actually offered the choice at middle school level where kids were taking more than one language? Was it Glastonbury? Yeah, they actually, the way they had reconfigured their middle school structure was, they put, everybody had a daily language class that they could take, but then they also plugged into their Unified Arts Block the opportunity to choose another language. So they actually had a number of kids taking two languages as early as like sixth grade, which was, you know, I'm not sure where I feel about that, because I also don't want to pull kids away from the arts and music and all those kind of things, but the idea that it's, the brain is a sponge to be able to learn it at that point. So there didn't appear to be a drop-off in that. I think, you know, certainly, there would likely be, I would hope, there'd be a lot of kids that would stick with Spanish long enough to reach the point where they are truly fluent in the language and they could actually drop down in Madrid and function, but the goal is proficiency in language and is proficiency in language, and once you've reached that level, then it's natural to say, gee, you know what, I mastered this one, let me try another one. And I think that's what we saw happening more often than not. Is that pretty accurate? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Yes, Al?
I just have like an information request. So you gave us like the daily fourth-grade schedule and the weekly fourth-grade schedule. Can you give us the daily and weekly schedule for fifth grade with and without foreign language, and if you implemented foreign language?
Yes, I can. We actually spent a lot of time talking about it, and I think the idea was that at the fifth-grade level, which has been the model that we've talked about, you basically replicating the same schedule that's done at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at fifth grade. We did, one of the reasons why we proposed the idea of starting with three to five classes in middle school was that it allowed us to, because one of the things we've experimented with, because there are some kids in the fifth grade, particularly kids taking Chinese that are taking
Right.
... a language at the middle school, and they found doing it five days a week to be too much at that point, and so doing it only three days a week, that would leave two of the rotations in their schedule that could be used for either a bobcat time or whatever other uses that...
I just want to get that, because in the queue, you have like a
Right.
... potentially a fifth-grade teacher, and before we can approve the fifth-grade teacher theoretically, we have to know what the schedule looks like and what the impact is on the schedule.
Right.
So that, we should, let's just roll that out.
I will bring that to you next time. I'll bring that to you next time.
Yeah.
We actually saw that as a relatively resolved issue in our minds, and I guess that's why we didn't include it in this presentation.
Other questions?
So you said that we've been trying to get 90 minutes of reading literacy in the elementary schools every day now. I think we've heard in the past that we think that World Language exposure improved literacy. Is that a place where you would suggest to take some time out of the way that ELA is today?
No, I would not. I wouldn't. That's why I think, one of the things we have to do, that's why I think it's important that we take a step back and talk about what are the priorities we want to make sure to provide for. I do think there are efficiencies that can be found in our current schedule to make more time available, but if I were to stand before the Mastway and Muharamit staff and say, hey, we're going to do less literacy, and we're going to plug in World Language, I'd get a resounding no. That's definitely not something that they would see as being the solution right up front. However, once you get a program going, over time, it can become more integrated, and I don't think until it's there, you can actually maximize its potential. It takes, I mean, just speaking to the work that our language department is doing now, we've been really trying to move in a proficiency direction for three years, and we're still refining, revising. So, ultimately, would there be benefits to students in terms of reading and writing and all of those things by being a student of World Language? Absolutely. But I don't think you can assume that up front and just plug it in and say, okay, we're going to reduce literacy time in order to do language. I think that would be a bad idea.
Michael, I think, you know, when you think about the day that we have at the elementary school, we also have to include transportation. And one of the questions that Todd and I were pursuing with Lisa was, how would we condense the pickup time at the end of the day? So we spend 25 minutes, as an example, at Mastway, waiting from the first bus to the last bus. So, we challenged Lisa to say, what if, what if we could condense that to 10 minutes? The end of the day is still the end of the day, the last bus, but we could pick up time, if we could pick up time by condensing the pickup point, we could add time to the instructional day, which doesn't impact the teacher contract, which eliminates that cost. So we've been playing, just beginning stages of playing around with the idea of what would we need to do to create a more efficient pickup at the end of the day. The Mastway School, for example, right now, has put their FLESS block
Team.
Team block at the end of the day, and so they carry that right through to bus delivery. So if we could tighten up pickup, we could pick up academic time. So, that's one possible avenue that we could start investigating for a solution.
Also to add to that as well, some of the schools that we've visited recommended that if you do introduce an elementary school language program, that you actually include the regular education teachers in the curriculum building of that program so that they can kind of talk about where can we pull things off of their plates to kind of make them feel supported. And just kind of, it keeps that, again, that continuity across all of their teachers, and it kind of starts to bring down the stress level of the teachers as well, once they know that they can see the benefit of why a World Language is being added to their day.
You said it really, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
You said it really fast, but with two elementary teachers, what does that availability look like? I think you said how many classes?
Well, so if you assume we're going to do three classes per, at Mastway, there are 19 total classes. What's the grade level that doesn't have four?
First.
First grade. So K-2, 3, and 4 have four teachers, and first has three, so there are 19 classes. If you're going to try to do three 25 to 30-minute blocks a week with 19 groups, that is 57 classes per week that you're trying to get in there. And so that is about 30 hours, which is as much teaching as any course subject area teacher does, and it's five preps. So it's a very, that would be a very, that would be a full-time job, is what I'm saying.
Sounds like more than...
Yeah, it is to me, too.
Well, it may be in time.
Well, you know, I was thinking, Todd, as you were presenting the staffing, that we might want to consider the model we use with the orchestra program, where we use a dedicated tutor to support the teacher, because I'm thinking 57 classes, and, you know, I did this in my young years as an art teacher, is a lot of classes. And one of the ways that we created the orchestra program to be cost-efficient was bringing in dedicated support right from the beginning, and so as a result, we have, you know, 250 kids doing strings, but we don't have three strings teachers, we have one, and we brought in the two dedicated aides. So, it may be that, you know, as we build the staffing model for the elementary, we think professional and paraprofessional, just to make sure that we don't exhaust the person we're bringing in.
And actually, I should have mentioned, too, one of the other components of our recommendation is, it probably would not be a good idea of a rollout plan to say, we're going to do K through 4 all at once.
Right.
One of the things we've done with the expansion of the proficiency model in the middle and high school is we've done one year at a time. And so what I thought would be was, you hire the staffing the first year, and you say, we're going to do a K-2 model, let's say, for the first year, with the idea that with your third and fourth grade, maybe you do an exploratory model just to introduce them to the language, but know it's going to take you a few years to build it and eventually get to the point where it's a K-4 model. And during that time, you can make adjustments, and you can talk about, okay, well, is that enough staffing? And it certainly, one per school might not be enough once it's fully implemented, but it certainly would be enough to get it started.
Todd, have you and the committee started talking about how, I mean, you've addressed the obstacles, so that has to be addressed, but also what your recommended implementation plan is and timeline? Has that conversation started?
Yeah, and basically what we feel is that, you know, we should probably have a three-year kind of rollout. So like I say, you hire the first, first year, I think step one would be, we think, hiring the fifth-grade position and getting that recommendation fully established, so the 5 to 12 model is as was recommended by our World Language Department. And then the next step would be hiring the staff, starting with a K-2, and then, you know, go up to 3 the next year, and then go up to 4 the year after. So it's three years from the time you start until you end, and they're very well, it's hard to predict all of the variables, but certainly, under a three-year rollout, you would have time to adjust and to figure out exactly what your staffing needs would be. And certainly, we did see a number of programs, in fact, one of the most successful ones was over at East Kingston, and they had a paraprofessional who, they actually had two different languages going on, but the para was doing all of the language classes, so it was actually good. We actually got to see the same theme, same topic, same lesson, once done in Spanish, then done in French, and then watch the para try to interact with, it was very impressive to see a paraprofessional who could do that, but she was fantastic.
What are the benefits of starting, if we do a phased rollout like that, starting with the first elementary exposure being K-2 versus 3, 4?
It gives, it allows the system to build itself, so, because keep in mind, we're also, we've often used the phrase, building a plane while you're flying it, kind of a thing, and so at some point, the two pieces have to meet in the middle. And so by doing it as a multiple-year rollout, it gives us time to really solidify the 5 through 12 sequence, because don't forget that we're, we just expanded to sixth grade two years ago, and so we're still building year three of that program. And then as you add fifth grade, now we need to build year four of that program, and then that has to roll up to the high school. And so what's happening at the high school is conversation about, okay, now we have, in fact, one of the biggest challenges is the kids in eighth grade this next year are going to be very different than the World Language students we've ever had before, because they've had three years, and before that, they hadn't. And so the options that are available at the high school have to change. So it's a systematic approach. The closer together you start, the less time you have to make those adjustments.
Are our middle school students allowed to change languages between years now?
Yeah, they do.
They decide to change, they can have it, of course.
Yeah, and they can also, we always have an entry point for World Language at the high school, too, so you could get to high school and say, okay, I'm going to start over again with a different language. My daughter did that when she was in high school.
Yeah, okay, two more quick things. In addition to Al's request for the schedule, I know you've provided this before, but if you could provide the middle school breakdown of enrollment by language
Sure.
At the same time? I think that's easy, data to poll.
Yep, I can have that for you next meeting.
And, at least in New Hampshire, I don't know how it is in Massachusetts, but we know that we count hours, not days, for our school year. So for these schools that have longer school days than ours, are they also having equivalent or longer school years?
Obviously, it varies by state standards, you know.
At least for the ones, the New Hampshire schools benchmark.
The New Hampshire schools are all, they're all driven by the same standards that we are.
So the question is, do those districts have longer school years or shorter school years than us?
Okay, you're talking about total number of days.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I can definitely take a look at that, too.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The 2020-2021 school calendar, first review.
And, you know, when I say first review, it's really just to kind of put it in front of you to let you know that we're in conversations with teachers and administrators related to the draft. I just want to point out that Labor Day is extremely late, and it does cause some unique hiccups if we start, for example, and this is something that I always try to avoid, I try to be in concert with Dover, but if we, they're going to start a week later than we would normally in the calendar, and that would put potentially the last snow day, the 28th of June. And, you know, when I sat with the administrative team, they all kind of went, what? You know, because you could end up with a year like we had two years ago, where we have eight snow days instead of five, that would push you literally to the end of June. So we were trying, we were looking at the calendar for a spot that we could start similar to what we have done in the past, but it won't be the same because of how late Labor Day is. So this is just a first blush, we're taking it back for more consideration with the administrators and teachers, just to see if we've got it in a way that we're ready to recommend it to you, but I just wanted to let you know that it was in, that it was in conversation right now. Because a lot of times, people are asking, where's the calendar for next year?
Do you want feedback on this?
Sure.
So I really like the starting earlier aspect of it, as opposed to pushing later in June.
You didn't want to do, celebrate July 4th at school with what your kids might call...
I'm the one who's asked about reconfiguring vacations to make that end date earlier in the past, so. I am wondering, though, if there's a way to move around teacher workdays or something to have that kind of phase in at the start of the school year, where you don't go straight from two days to five on the second.
Yep, that actually is one of the big questions that came up as recently as this week, when I floated it. So you're right on with the current conversation that's going on in the district, Michael.
And then, the October Teacher Work Day, which is Indigenous Peoples' Weekend and is the Elementary Conference Day typically, I think that by having that be a four-day weekend, by constructing a four-day weekend, we actually complicate getting families to conferences. Because you encourage families to go away for that weekend, and which makes it harder for teachers to have to deal with parents that don't want to be there that day. So if we really want that to be a conference day, it might be best to move that, to break up that weekend somewhere else. And then, I've always wondered, too, and this is not specifically a schedule question, but we have this goal-setting conference, but there's no follow-up conference later in the year, and is that something that we think there would be value in considering somewhere down the road?
All right, I'll put it out there and see what kind of feedback we get. Wendy, you have Michael's questions, because I wasn't writing. Anybody else's initial thoughts? Great, so this will come back to you as we work it with our staffs. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we are now down to our policies. So, yeah, I don't know if we want to start with a discussion, or are we ready to move into
We should start with a motion, put them on the table, and then open the discussion.
I know, that didn't work out so well last time, so we just...
So, you know, just to bring the board up to speed, you know, we had a discussion as a board at the last meeting, and I think, two meetings ago, I incorporated the changes that I heard the board make for discussion at the last meeting, not for first read. We brought that work to the Policy Committee from our full meeting, and so the changes that you're seeing this evening are a result of the two discussions and the Policy Committee coming back with what they felt they heard from the full board. So, the drafts in front of you reflect all of that conversation and work.
Could I ask that we do J-L-I-E after J-I-H-B, because there's a linkage, and I just think the natural order would work on this.
So, if you want to start with J-I-H-B, would someone like to make a motion? Brian?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
This is the facilities.
Yeah, this is for searches of student, no, J...
J-H.
J-I-H-B is searches
Okay, got it.
... of student automobiles on school property.
Okay.
So, Brian, motion, and Dan, second, discussion.
Yes? So, I, you know, and I wasn't at our last meeting, nor was I at policy, but I very much appreciate the rewrite and greatly appreciate the reach out from Alan Dan to Chief Curz and having Chief Curz here. The one, I guess I have two things to raise. One is that the last line that talks about the contraband being seized and will be preserved and held in accordance with the applicable administrative rules and procedures, I don't remember ever seeing what those rules and procedures are, and I don't know if that's important. The other thing is, and certainly I'm much more supportive of the policy now, but I would make a suggestion to add to the policy that, and I'll read it to you, "A search of a car should be thought of as a last resort, performed when all other options have been considered and felt to not be satisfactory." So I, I'll move that, I guess, as an addition to the policy.
As an amendment to the policy.
As an amendment to the policy.
Is there a second to that?
Can I read it back, Ken?
There was no second, so.
Oh, okay.
Read it back. You want me to read it back? Yeah. "A search of a car should be thought of as a last resort, performed when all other options have been considered and felt to not be satisfactory." And the reason I feel that is I think that talking to students should really be considered to be the first option and not automatically going to a search, but whether it's the principal, someone the principal designates, the SRO officer, because I think we're not so much trying to get kids into trouble, and I think Chief Curz really expresses that, but we're trying to think of what really is going to have the most beneficial impact on that student. Recognizing maybe there are times where a search really needs to be Recognizing maybe there are times where a search really needs to be done, but I just want to make sure that that's the last option and not the first option.
So actually, that was my intent with the language with the SRO, the collaboration with the SRO. So if you immediately start with a collaboration of the SRO, it, particularly given what the policy of the Durham Police Department, that is, I mean, you can more explicitly state it, but that, that's exactly what the intent is.
And I agree completely.
So that moves it to the, not only does it make the search not necessarily the first option, but it also prepares the staff that if a search does occur, they're ready for the implications of that.
Sure. And I'm so thankful that that's in there. And again, I look at policy as, we've got a great SRO officer now, we have a great principal now. Characters change, and I just think having that as guidance, you know, Chief Curz is incredible. I can't imagine a better police chief in town, and especially College Town, but he's not going to be here, and philosophies change. And I just love to lock into policy what our overriding philosophy or guidance is. So that's why I thought to maybe add that.
I'll second that.
You'll second that.
Where would you put that exactly?
I would just put it at the end.
And so now that it's been seconded, Suzanne, would you mind? I just want to make sure, I mean, philosophically, I agree with that, but I want to make sure it's practical for the high school administration. That amendment feel reasonable in terms of your ability to do your job?
Yes, anytime we search students' backpacks or any belongings, it's always a last resort.
Right, thank you.
So I guess we'll move on the amend?
Move it, move it as amended.
Oh, move it as amended.
You have to vote on the amendment first, and then if the amendment is accepted, then you can move the policy.
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor of amending the policy as presented? I think I'll go ahead.
Five?
All opposed. And student rep, any?
She voted yes.
Oh, yes, okay. All right, so the.
And then as amended?
Okay, so I'd like to move our policy, J-I-H-B, to be accepted on first read as amended.
Okay, do you have a second for that, Al?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? And that's six in favor, student rep is in favor. Okay, so now that J-I-H-B has been accepted, and that's only actually for first read, can we go to J-L-I-E, student automobile use, for first read? Can I have a motion for that, Al?
So moved.
Okay, can I, second, Brian? Any discussion on that? Because all that does is just say, okay, you know, J-I-H-B is what we, you know, it just kind of makes that reference.
Looks like you're ready to move it.
All right, any discussion, then, ready to, ready to vote? All in favor? Okay, so six in favor, student rep is in favor, so J-L-I-E has been approved for first read. So now we are on, where's our facilities one? Why can't I find it? Oh, it's KF. There we go, so KF, and then the R, and the, yeah, all of that. Anybody want to make a motion? Brian, second?
What's the motion?
It's for KF, and then KFR, and KFR.
Use of school buildings.
Yeah.
Facilities.
We're doing all of them together?
And the fees.
Yes.
Unless you want to separate them.
I'm going to, yeah, I'd like to take the policy and the fee schedule and the procedure separately, if you mind.
Can we do that, though? Because so much of the, so much of the, we've now incorporated so much of the language to make sure that it's consistent throughout. I don't see how we could amend one part without the other, because we've, we took that advice.
We should have a discussion, whatever is on Michael's mind, because it might inform the overall policy and facilities use.
Right.
So the one procedure that requires board action is the actual fee schedule. The policy requires board action. The procedure in between there doesn't require board action, but if we start changing the policy, and it has implications, we may have to change the procedure to reflect that. So, Michael, I think you should say what's on your mind, so that we can hear it.
Sure, so I shared, I shared a couple meetings ago, my concerns about how we treat procedure in general, and I did receive a response from Tom that we would not consider making changes to that this time, so I will not vote for any procedures.
Okay.
Because I think our process for handling those is inadequate.
What's inadequate about the process?
We don't define what procedure is, how it's controlled. We make, we set a procedure, the administration can change a procedure without bringing it back to the board, I just think it's very loose.
So again, we're not, so right now, all we're doing is we're considering the policy KF.
And, and the facilities.
And, yes.
Fee.
Fee schedule, yes.
That is a procedure, so.
Right, use of school buildings and facilities for first read, and so can I have, did I have a motion? No, we didn't have a motion.
I don't remember.
Brian motioned it.
Oh, Brian didn't motion it, and then we didn't get to the second. I have a second on that?
Well, I asked for the clarification of what was in the motion, so.
Yep.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Dan will second. Okay, so specific discussion around this policy or the fee schedule?
Michael just had a professional courtesy. Do you want us to separate the policy, so you can vote on that, or do you?
No, I do appreciate the question, but since we call out the fee schedule specifically in the policy, I think that's fine to keep those together.
Okay.
So I'm, and maybe, maybe it's relevant to what Michael asked, but there was something in kind of the R part that I would ask that we consider changing. So is that appropriate or not appropriate, or where does that fit in?
Well, R, as Michael has alluded to, is administrative, and I've always listened to the board's input, so if your, if your thoughts, Kenny, are easily incorporated or doesn't change the policy, then I'm absolutely open to hearing what your thoughts are.
Okay, so it's on page five? I guess it's five of the R document. Everybody have that?
Mm-hmm.
And it's under the one that's called use priorities? And we have a listing of seven priorities there. And it's been brought to my attention with what's evolving in youth sports, which I think is very similar to what we're seeing in overscheduling of students, is this kind of professionalism at younger ages. And the science is incredibly clear that it's very harmful when kids get into only one sport at a young age, and it's very good when they're rotating through sports, it's better on their body, it better allows them to define themselves. So I would just want to add, as we go through that, where we have nonprofit programs serving the youth of the Oyster River communities, I've heard from sports that get squeezed out because there's sports that are not in season. And maybe an example might be soccer, which is typically a fall sport, has now become a year-round sport, and they'll squeeze out a sport like lacrosse. And the lacrosse has not had access to fields that they would want. So I would add that kind of in a priority ranking, is that the sport's true season kind of gets priority over a sport out of season.
So part of the new policy that was incorporated, it was Al's suggestion, was that Andy is sitting down with organizations who are requesting time, and Dan has pointed out also that that balance is important. So when we're sitting down with organizations, we are very careful now, and Dan is witnesses at this point, where we're having thoughtful conversations. We would never let somebody take up an entire three seasons. We do it season by season, and they're sitting at the table at this point per policy, and we're having those discussions. In fact, one of the big organizations missed the deadline by three weeks.
That's all we've heard.
And they're not happy because the other organization didn't, and as a result, Andy made a decision because one organization was ready, the other organization wasn't, and we went forward and scheduled because it was time. We had waited long enough on the other organization. So I think the difference in the way the policy actually is working now is significantly different than it was working two years ago, and we're bringing the players to the table, figuratively and literally, and having those conversations. So I don't think it requires necessarily a change, because it's happening.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to further that point, one of the suggestions I've made, and I've had a discussion with Andy, and I think my sense is he agrees, is that we can better define the, let's say, deadline for the window of time in which we accept requests for a upcoming season, so that organizations can better plan to meet that deadline. So for example, if it's the fall season, we ask that you get your request in no later than particular date, and then we maybe estimate that it'll take us two weeks to resolve any conflicts that may arise. But, you know, I take your point, Kenny, that, that each, sports that are traditionally in-season should be given priority over sports that are perhaps being played outside of their traditional season. So I'm not sure we need that yet in.
I don't think we need that, because I think it's happening.
Procedure, but.
I think that a lot of work has gone, a lot of revision, and I think it's important to let it sort of play out for a season. We can always, you know, if there's still things that we need to tweak, we can always bring it back, you know, for whatever, for next spring, or, you know, for early next fall, or whenever the timeframe is. But I think it's important to kind of, now that we've made all these revisions that have really tightened up a lot, to just see how it plays out.
Well, actually, in the procedural one, I would add exactly what Dan said, that you put, that doesn't change the policy, but you put a deadline in there. Because it doesn't make sense to have a meeting where you're working out the scheduling if somebody hasn't gotten their schedule in. So, and again, like, since it's happened once now, where somebody missed it with three weeks, it's just, it, let's, if we put that in the procedure, it's not, that's not a huge substantive change.
Doesn't change the.
It doesn't change the policy at all. It just means that when Andy is sending out stuff for timing, people know if you don't get it in at this date, then, you know, you get what you get.
And I think they learned that this year.
Yeah.
All right, so are we?
So I just had two quick things that, having reflected on it a little more, I think we need to change. The, on the, on the fee schedule, we have a lot of dates listed, and because the policy...
What page are you on?
Uh, I'm sorry.
It's just the fee schedule.
The fee schedule, correct.
Yeah.
So I went through and looked at the dates on the calendar. I believe that with the exception of today's date, they all reflect policy committee actions, which for the fee schedule should not, should not be adopted in policy committee. The board, it takes a board action, as I understand it, to.
Oh, the revision.
Right, so what I'm suggesting is, and I'll make a motion if, if we need it, is that we remove those revision dates with the exception of tonight, because those are, those are reflected of, of policy committee meetings, I think, and not board action. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Then the last one, and, and just reading through the minutes and remembering Jim Rizicky's comments at our last meeting, he talked about the issuance of the access cards, and we have on page two of the R document, I need to get there. I'm not sure this is an attainable requirement, frankly, and so, only I could find it. Okay, building access, here we go. Under use of school buildings and facilities, page two of three.
You're in the policy.
I'm in the policy, I'm sorry. I had that as the R. So I take it back, it's a policy revision. Keys and cards provided to approved users are for their exclusive use and may not be shared with anyone. Adult supervision by the approved user, meaning an individual person, as I understand it, is required at all times for events that involve children. If I remember Jim's comments correctly, we're only issuing a couple of cards regardless of the size of the organization. I'm not sure it's reasonable to expect one individual representing that organization to be present. And in fact, as I understand it, we still have lock boxes on the outside of the buildings where these cards are stored. So if that's, if that's a needed step in the process, it tells me that other individuals are being given a, an access code to get the box open, to get the card out, meaning the person that's, the card is issued to is not necessarily present.
I don't know that that's accurate, Dan.
Okay.
I think that Jim Rizicky hands the card off to the user, or Alice does.
Okay.
Yeah, and in terms of the language, I think it's important to be definitive, whether it's that person or a person representing the organization.
Okay.
That there's a clear statement that when children are on the premises, there's adult supervision.
So the adult supervision piece is absolutely essential. The wording here, to me, says that it's one individual in the organization that may use the card.
And the reason it says that, it's the one individual who has handed the card. So, you know, in, in any of these organizations, that person is the, the person that's responsible. They're the ones that are signing the sheet, they're the ones getting the card. You know, if they, at that point, say, you know, "I'm not going to be there, I want you to be in charge," there's got to be somebody in charge, and I think that's, that's really the point of that. And if, you know, if you want to modify that, that's fine, just, I just want to make sure that we understand that one of the things that happens in our schools is grown-ups come in with a bunch of kids who are very energetic and enthusiastic, and then they are running through the schools, and nobody's corralling them.
And I'm not, I, I'm, we're totally on the same page with the absolute necessity of adult supervision. The one change I think we might make that makes this a policy that, that organizations can adhere to is, instead of saying adult supervision by the approved user, adult supervision by an approved user might be, might give them the flexibility to delegate, "I'm letting you into the building, you're the coach in charge, I need to go run another program, coach another team, what have you."
That's, that's reasonable, Dan, so you just make it as an amendment, and we'll do the same thing we did before, and, and see if there's a second, and move it.
Do we really need an amendment for such a minor change? Can we send it as a friendly amendment?
Al's become the sergeant of arms tonight, so I'm different.
No, but we've done, we've done friendly amendments before.
It's just a simple word, but it does make it easier.
Yeah.
It clarifies, I, I mean, I don't, you know, I think it's easy.
So a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, and then the dates, removing.
It's a non-substantive change.
Ah, there we go.
Non-substantive change.
And removing the other dates is every, I'm guessing everyone's comfortable with that as well, okay. So those are the only changes I made.
So what exactly was the change here?
So we're gonna remove, we're gonna change, under building access, the, the last sentence, adult supervision by the gets approved, gets changed to adult supervision by an approved user. That way, they have the ability to follow the, comply with the policy and delegate that oversight of children piece to a coach, a parent, what have you, some, some approved person within their program.
So I guess I had the impression, from the way Jim answered the question last time, that the approved user was an organization and not a specific individual.
That's how, yes, that's how it works. I mean, we, whether we're delegating to, well, any organization, that organization, the person who picks up the key, I wasn't assuming that person was 100% responsible 100% of the time. I was assuming the organization was responsible, and I think Dan's change makes that clear.
It does, yeah.
So the ambiguity around user being an organization or an individual, I think, is what, we could either address that, or may, I, I think it works by just saying, "And." Okay, all right.
Yeah. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Six in favor, student rep is in favor, yay!
We have standing ovation.
Yeah, seriously, we still have, don't go away, because we still have one more, one more policy to approve, which is drug-free, we have two?
No, no, we have two, we have the technology devices.
Oh, shoots, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve policy, J-I-C-J, parentheses, A, technology devices, K through eight, cell phone and personal devices.
So the genesis of this simple change.
Oh, wait, we need a second, Brian, and Brian will second, okay.
So the genesis of this simple change was, we had a high school student that was covered by the high school policy in terms of use of a device on a school bus, but when we changed the policy previously at the middle school level, we omitted the fact that they had to be accountable to the school rules on the school bus as well. So we just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear that the elementary children are subject. So, we just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear that the elementary children are subject to the same policies as the high school when they're on the school bus.
Okay. So, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Six in favor, student rep is in favor, and we have one more policy, which is policy A-D-B. Anyone?
Yep. And I'll move that, because it looks like Michael's concern has been added in bold type there.
Okay. So, Kenny, motion, second? Brian? Okay. Any discussion on this now? Are all in favor? Six in favor, student rep is in favor, we did it.
May I just ask for one thing for a future meeting? To Michael's point, I, once the full board is back at a, at another meeting, I would like to have a discussion as to whether the board feels that the board should be more involved in the development and changing of our documents, because in as much as I support the idea of streamlining these things for the administration, so we don't get bogged down, the, the effect of an R document could really dramatically change the intent and the enactment of a policy, so.
And I think, I, I think, just to, I think the idea was that, right now, when we have so much on our plate, the budget and the middle school, that it was just something that we just really, I mean, we, we could, that's going to be a long discussion, and I think the idea was more that, can we put it off until, you know, kind of maybe after the middle school?
Yep. But I'd really, I really like us to have that discussion, so.
Yep. All right. Oops, anything else added to that? So, School Board Committee updates.
Manifest Committee met before the meeting tonight, myself, Dan. Got through it smooth and easy.
All right. Any other committee updates? Long Range Planning Committee met last week to finalize the presentation that Lisa Allison will be making at the next board meeting. Anything else for board? Okay. So, public comments? No public comments. All right. Future meeting dates, our next regular meeting will be December 4th. Yeah, can I have a, and then we don't have any non-publics or non-meeting, so can I motion to, what's that?
We, no meeting tomorrow.
Yes, no meeting is tomorrow, we no meeting tomorrow. Yes.
And we all thank you.
Yes. So, motion to adjourn, Al, second by Brian, all in favor, and we are adjourned.